We give those who trespass against us and we do not intend to issue but deliver a single device as you aim it and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
For the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose name we proclaim the liberty of this world.
First item on the agenda, I entertain a motion to approve the legislative minutes from July 5th, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussions, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes in reference to eviction process from May 2nd, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes in reference to personnel manual on May 2nd, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes in reference to the 150th anniversary on May 16th, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Sorry.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes in reference to unsolicited newspapers, June 6th, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. At this time, we have a special proclamation we would like to read as for Mrs. Susan Doherty. Susan, I know you're here. If you could come to the podium, please.
Bring your handsome husband, you can do that.
Handsome.
How are you?
Good to see you.
Every day, the council is concerned as far as how we manage the affairs of the county. We do a great job, of course, the county council concerned executive. What can be a book sometimes is the hard work that our administration and our staff does every single day. What we do doesn't scratch the surface as far as what they do at helping this county run day to day and to run so, or to be so seamlessly. And the mic's not on, okay, good. Yep. So what we have today is recognizing one individual who has demonstrated beyond, beyond demonstration as far as how great a service can be done for Wacomico County, for the citizens of Wacomico County, and going beyond just in order what you consider everyday measures. But when you add it all up, it's quite an accomplishment for the county, for the citizens of Wacomico County. And Susan Doherty is here today to receive this proclamation from the Wacomico County Council. And I'll read it as such. Whereas we would like to express our appreciation to Susan Doherty and honor her for her distinguished career with Wacomico County and dedicated service to your residents of the county that spans over 29 years. And whereas Mrs. Doherty has announced her decision to retire after a long and satisfying career with Wacomico County, whereas Mrs. Susan Doherty began her 29-year career with Wacomico County in 1987 as an administrative specialist finance, she held that position for 13 years. Her career then advanced to a position of chief finance specialist for which she served for seven years, and then to accounting analyst, a position that she held for almost 10 years until her retirement on July 19th, which is tomorrow, 2017. And whereas Mrs. Susan Doherty has helped the finance department through many challenges, changes, and developments, always looking for ways to institute processes for incremental efficiencies as well as citizen services. And whereas Mrs. Doherty has always shown tremendous dedication to her profession and worked many long hours, often sacrificed and pursued for the good of others. And whereas over 29 years of employment, Mrs. Doherty's fiscal responsibility and work ethic serve as an exceptional example for all county employees. Now therefore, Wacomico County Council recognizes and honors Mrs. Susan Doherty for her contribution to Wacomico County for loyalty, professionalism, good judgment, and fairness, and her tremendous continued years of happiness and good help done this 18th day of July, 2017.
I would like to thank Ms. Doherty and her husband for their service to the county.
Thank you. You still have one more day, Susan. Good morning, Mrs. Hurley.
Good morning, Council President, County Council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 95, or 96, 2017, approving a lease agreement between Wacomico County, Maryland, and Piedmont Airlines Incorporated for property located at the Salisbury-Oceans City-Wacomico Regional Airport. Piedmont Airlines Incorporated is interested in leasing 6,175 square feet within the David J. Ward Building, also known as Old Terminal Building, located at the airport. The proposed lease is for a period of three years with one renewal option for additional three years. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing will be held this morning at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 96, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I know Mr. Strausberg is here. Is there any questions from council?
Is this just the first reading or the only reading?
Council had a work session on this previously, but this is the first and only reading.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 96, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, excuse me, it's a public hearing. I missed that. Sorry, sorry. We have a public hearing in reference to Resolution 96, 2017 before we make up our minds. Anybody from the public that would like to make a comment in reference to this resolution, please come to the podium and state your name and your concerns. Okay, seeing none, that concludes the public hearing. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 96, 2017. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 96, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 97, 2017, confirming the appointment of Dawn Mitchell Parks as Director of the Department of Finance. Mrs. Parks is currently serving as the Acting Director of Finance and has previously served in the Finance Department as the Financial Systems Program Manager and Assistant Director of Finance for Operations.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 97, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Dawn Mitchell Parks is here. Would you like to come up briefly?
Okay.
Certainly.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't think there are many questions, but I thought at least it was a good opportunity for you to meet with council one-on-one and for the public to recognize who's going to be responsible for one of the most important departments in the county, which is the Finance Department, of course.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate you taking that role and accepting that role.
Sorry, sorry.
Does council have any questions? Comments?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Again.
I mean, well, for the public's benefit, could you maybe just talk about your background a little bit? I mean, again, it's a good chance to introduce.
Introduce? Well, I've been with the county for 12 years. I started in the finance office as the Systems Manager, implementing the software system we are now. In 2012, I became the Acting Director of Finance and was in that role until I transferred over to IT in the last year and a half. So prior to that, I worked for a software company, traveling across the country, implementing financial software. With that, you have to know finances in order to implement the software. I graduated college way back when, from East Carolina University with a business degree in finance. And I studied accounting, not only at SU, but also at NC State. Currently, I am working on getting my CPFO, which is a Certified Public Financial Officer certification.
Do you have a CPA?
No, I do not.
You have?
I do have the hours to sit for CPA, it just wasn't, doing taxes wasn't something that...
Are you going to sit for it?
At this time, the CPFO would actually give me a broader financial than a CPA.
Expand your background?
Yes.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you. Entertain a motion from council to approve Resolution 97, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I think we did that. All those in favor?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is Resolution Number 98, 2017, to prohibit parking of motor vehicles on Reamer Drive from Beukler Drive to a point approximately 200 feet south. There have been a number of complaints from citizens about vehicles parking on Reamer Drive, which is creating a traffic hazard, and a request has been made to prohibit parking in this area. If this resolution is approved, Public Works will install new parking signs in that area.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 98, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Baker, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good morning, sir, how are you?
Great, thanks. If you could just give us a brief overview.
Yeah, this was actually something that, oh, this was something that was brought to my attention from Councilman Davis. There were some residents that were concerned about vehicles parking on this dead-end street with engagement was perceived as illegal activity. The citizens contacted the police department, basically to get these folks shooed away. And the police told them, look, we can't do anything, they're parked on the street illegally. We'd have to go and get no parking signs, and that involves this legislation. So we get that behind us, we put up the no parking signs, and hopefully these folks, community, will get a little bit quieter and safer for them.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 98, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dallas.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, and state your name and your concern. Good morning, President Shawnee.
My name is Mary Ashanti, and I'm the President of Wacomico County NAACP. And I thank God for the opportunity to move today to President Cannon and members of the County Council and all those assembled, good morning. We want to invite you to... We want to invite you to at least two events. One is the Medicaid Forum, which is tomorrow night, July 19th, from 6:30 to 8:30, at the one-stop job market on 31901 Tri-County Way in Salisbury, Maryland. And it's right across the, from Warwick Community College. And we attended that event in Baltimore, and it was wall-to-wall people. So we're hoping that we get a good turnout at this, and we're hoping that elected officials will also attend. It's sponsored by Healthcare for All, Maryland State NAACP, Somerset County Health Department, Homeless Alliance of the Lower Shore, and 1199 SEIU Union. So we're hoping that you will come and share whatever concerns you have about the, any cuts in Medicaid. The other is the annual Back to School Rally, sponsored by Wacomico County NAACP Education Committee. It's Thursday, August 3rd, 12:30 to 3:00, at Salisbury Middle School. We're hoping that you will stop by and mingle and greet with the young people. They're always pleased when they see elected officials, folks from adults coming out to see how they're doing. Every year, we give school supplies to public school children from pre-K to the eighth grade. And so the public is encouraged to attend. Students must be accompanied by an adult. So we are hoping that you support those events. Also, we want to express a concern about a housing issue. On the corner of West Road and Rose Street is a townhouse, not a townhouse, but a rural house. It's right across from the State Highway Building. Those rural houses are over 60 years old, and they are not in any shape for anyone to be living in. A long time ago, they should have been abolished, demolished. But for some reason, they're still there. I say there are so many meetings that talk about Salisbury and Wacomico County and how you want it to be seen. But all a person have to do is leave Route 50 and go into Summer District 1, and they would see that some of those houses are not fit to live in, and that is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, President Shawnee. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments. Council comments?
And then last week, some of the council members and the county executive was at the opening ceremonies for the USSSA softball, girls' softball tournament, the packed house, a lot of people there, thousands of people. And tonight, I believe, is that correct, is the second opening ceremony for the second week at 6 o'clock at the Civic Center. So it's going to be a big event. And then at our next, August 1st, will be National Night Out in Salisbury and Fruitland Tuesday. That's a big event for the area. There'll be a lot of people at those two events as well.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Under Presidential comments, attended the Parsons Cemetery Rededication. It was a very, it was a great event, and I appreciate all the work that they're doing for the community. In addition, attended the Willards Council Meeting. Thank them for their hospitality, and I really would like to thank them for all the hard work they do for the Willards community. And as Councilman Dodd said, yes, the USSA tournament is in Wacomico County. So if you go to the restaurant and there's a line a little bit longer than you might be used to, be thankful of that because those are people that are coming in from everywhere. And it's supporting Wacomico County, and it brings, it brings an awful lot of money into this county. And it is a great event, and we'd like to thank everyone who was involved in that and bringing that to the county. So keep that in mind. If you're wondering where all the new patrons are coming from, it's part of what we do as a county, to help grow this county, make it a better place to, in which to live. That being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work session followed by open work sessions with the Urban Services Commission, closed work session by the Urban Services Commission, and closed work sessions on the part of the Wacomico County Council.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We need a second motion for the closed meeting?
Not now. No, no, thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Means adjourned. First item on the agenda for the open work session is the Animal Ordinance Committee update. Mr. Aaron Bosama. Mr. Bosama, how are you?
Doing good, how are you doing, sir?
Great. Is there anybody else you'd like to have here with you?
No, I pretty much have everything covered. There are some members that were on the committee with me that are here, if they have any input.
If they'd like to present, they certainly could.
Yeah, anybody that was on the committee, if you guys want to come up, you certainly can.
Mrs. Wallace, did you want to come up? If you could state your name to the camera so everybody knows who you are, and thank you.
Sean Allen Bradley.
Edna Walls.
And Aaron Bosama.
All right, thank you. We did get your letter, thank you very much.
Yep.
Looks like you've made a lot of progress.
Yes, we did. Some of the proposed changes that we've come to thus far are pretty straightforward, some are a little bit more in-depth. Some revisions to definitions, some of it is just technical errors. For example, Section 133-11 has sections about rabid dogs. It should be listed as suspected rabid because the only way to confirm that anything is rabid is by euthanizing it, and the health department takes the head and tests it. So, you know, just fine-tuning some of that. And then there are some bigger changes that we have, such as unsafe weather conditions, the actual structure of a doghouse, tethering laws, kennel licenses, among other things, endangered stog. I didn't know if you wanted me to go through item by item, or if you guys, you know, if the council wanted to just kind of throw questions at us.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll review this because we need some time to go over.
Yeah, I wasn't able to get it to you a little bit earlier, and I apologize for that.
That's okay, that's all right.
Just rolling through it, on the second page, on D, looked like something's missing. Is that just because after the colon, nothing was changed?
You're talking on line 47?
Yes.
Yeah, there was nothing changed in the subsections of D. The entire section itself talks about dogs being deemed dangerous, and that's the one line that somehow declared got put in there.
Okay.
So that's a change to deem for the sake of consistency.
Okay. The only other thing I saw was just a grammatical line, 111, was un-sprayed instead of un-spade.
Oh, did it?
Yep.
Yeah, word, for some reason, does not like un-spade, so it changed it to un-sprayed. I thought I fixed most of those.
Yeah.
Apparently I missed one.
That'll be on, that'll be on the front page, Liz.
Yeah, I guess I have a question about, I mean, and we may go into in-depth more a little bit later, but kennel licenses, I see it sets at any person owning five or more un-sprayed or un-spayed dogs. So is five or more, I mean, what's the, what's the standard elsewhere for what?
The state of Maryland has six, I believe, just passed.
It used, the state law used to state 15 or more un-spayed females or selling from 15 or more litters per year. Understandably, that's insanely hard to enforce for anybody. This past legislative session up in Annapolis, the law was changed to six, and the "and" portion was changed to "or." So it's either six dogs, six un-spayed females, or selling from six or more litters a year. By state law, you have to get a kennel license.
So I guess the question is, then, do we need to do something as a county, then? I mean, is that a state kennel license, or, I mean?
The state law essentially sets the standard and then deviates the actual enforcement and issuing of a license to the counties. We have not had anything in our books that I've seen to this point regarding that, so that was just an addition into it, to be able to add those checks, and also to be able to permit animal control to be able to do, you know, a reasonable amount of checks during normal business hours on these facilities to make sure that, you know, they're taking care of the animals in an appropriate manner.
Are you suggesting, Mark, that maybe they should reference the state code as well and the state law?
Well, I mean, I mean, you know, we just saw this yesterday, so I'm trying to get my, you know, wrap my mind around it. But yeah, I mean, if there is state law that already sets a definition that basically allows the county then to do something, I mean, I'd have to kind of think about maybe what our approach would be the best approach. I mean, I'm not sure, this is, I wasn't aware of the state law, so.
He's trying to avoid some type of redundancy, but I think if you said in accordance with...
Yeah, and essentially, it's in accordance with, it drops us, what I propose is dropping us down to five instead of the six. Up in Annapolis, they had talked about doing down to four. There was an amendment for four animals, but, four animals and four litters, but that didn't pass, so they stuck with the six, and that was what ultimately passed up in Annapolis.
So we do have, as a local jurisdiction, we do have the right to make adjustments to that?
Yes, we do. We couldn't change it from, you know, the state standard of six, we obviously couldn't change it to seven or 10, but we can drop it down if we deem it necessary. Under the previous law, where it was 15, Worcester County and Somerset County both have lower restrictions on that.
Understood. Councilman Dodd?
Yeah, I agree with Council President Cannon that we need a little more time to digest and absorb this, but one of the things that stood out to me was where you scratched out under restraints or other tether, but then you mentioned it again later on.
Yeah, the, and I might have missed something later on, the other tether, you know, we talked about taking that out because by putting other tether, and it's not defined, you could have almost anything hooked up to the dog's collar.
Right, I understand, but you mentioned tether again.
In a, in another section?
Yeah, the second sentence, basically, like, so it'd be the second sentence.
Yeah.
If the dog is confined on a tether, excepting periods that are brief and incidental, the tether shall not be...
Tether, I might have missed it. Tether is basically defined as, you know, any restraint that's holding the dog back. I know it was somewhere else that I had mentioned it, that, or yeah, under 133-17, animal neglect, it's going to be the third page, line 101. Currently, the law just says neither chains ropes nor choke collars should be accepted for collars for a tethered dog. And then there's not much into it, the dog must be tethered to an object with a swivel to prevent injury to the dog. And then additionally, put vinyl-coated cables are an acceptable means to tether the dog as opposed to chains or other type of options. I mean, if you have one of those underground invisible fences, that's still fine. The subject we're trying to get away from is having people out there with those giant tow chains wrapped around a tree or their gutter, because dogs' nails, tails can get caught in there and cause severe injury to the animal.
Do you have anything in there about breakaway collars for cats? I saw a video where one had cut into the cat's underarm, and it got really infected.
We don't have anything, there's mostly nothing on the books as of now dealing with cats. The only thing that I really added in was the allowance of community cat or trap neuter, spay, release program. Most places I've been, the, about the most strict law that I've seen with cats regards to the cats have to wear a collar with identification tags on them. It works, but it's, I mean, cats are pretty sneaky at getting their collars off, they're a lot better at it than dogs, so, you know, the feasibility of actually putting something in place, you know, getting a cat to keep its collar on, and it, you know, it's an outdoor cat, that makes it kind of difficult. But that's about the only law specific to cats that I've seen around.
Yes, Charles.
On the cats, what is a community cat program?
A community cat program is a cat that has been entered into what we call a TNR program. It's trap, neuter, spay, and release. Essentially, they're feral cats, they're trapped, and they are vaccinated against rabies, they are either spayed or neutered, depending on their sex, and then they're released back into the area that they were trapped in. It serves multi-purpose. One, you're getting, instead of a bunch of unaltered, unvaccinated animals out there, which increases the chance of rabies and other infectious diseases to be caught and spread by those animals. They're vaccinated, so you don't have to worry about that necessarily as much as you have to worry about it as it is right now. And with the animals being fixed, you don't have to worry about repopulation.
Who does the trapping?
There's some groups around the county that are participating, and I've had people reach out to me that have wanted to participate in this program. I can get grants. I haven't gotten any yet because I don't want to get grant, you know, get, you know, put the cart in front of the horse, so to speak. But it's a very successful program, lots of places have used it. It's cut down dramatically, which we do have, I mean, I get calls all the time about feral cats. It's not an immediate, you're going to, not going to see us, the fix tomorrow. But over a time period, sometimes as little as one to two years, you see a dramatic decrease in the amount of cats that are around because of what has been deemed the vacuum effect, which is essentially if you take an animal out of, say you have feral cats in your yard and I take the animals out, the resource, which is your yard, is still there. So, you're going to have more come in. But if I put, if I take the one out and I put it into TNR and I put it back where it came from, that void is filled again. So, that space is not going to be occupied by an unaltered animal, unvaccinated animal. It's going to be filled by the animal that is protected against rabies, that can't have any litters. And then over time, basically, the animals don't have anybody to mate with because you start, you're reintroducing animals that are fixed back into the environment and they're going to die off, but they're going to die off of basically natural selection. You know, survival of the fittest kind of thing is going to get them. So, it's proven to be effective. University of Florida did a study on campus and they had a decline of 66% of cats on campus. There's many other studies around. The most recent one was in Pima County, Arizona. After a three-year targeted TNR program, the amount of feral cats decreased by 56 per, or decreased dramatically. It doesn't give the actual percentage, but the shelter itself, their save rate increased dramatically from 56%, which means they only saved 56% of the cats that came in the shelter because so many were feral. And they were able to reach up to a 91% save rate because these cats that were coming in, the TNR cats have an ear tip, so you know that they've been fixed already. So, the cats that did come in with the ear tip, they were able to re-release back out to where they came from. So, it cuts down on the litters, the kittens. I mean, this year already in our shelter, we've taken in 740 cats.
In our, the law, and I don't have it in front of us, but we are allowed to trap the cats. But I noticed if you go back to, let's see, 133-15, and after they've been into the program, you say they, you can release them back with the permission of the property owner. What happens if they've been trapped and the property owner does not want those cats released back into that neighborhood?
How, how I was trying to get the wording to sound was that they can be released back to the area that they were trapped into, that vicinity, or they can be trapped. If for some reason you can't get them back in that vicinity, say somebody had a farm and they wanted the animals, they could give permission for those trapped animals to go onto their farm.
I guess what I would use here as an example, and we've, we've talked before about a neighborhood close, not too far actually, from, from your office, you know, where there was a lot of feral cats, some of them were trapped. Basically, the folks don't want them back in the neighborhood.
Yes.
So, what would you do, just take them back and turn them loose in the street or?
Typically, the reason that we would recommend to put the fixed animals back in there is when you spay them, it removes a lot of those negative behaviors that a lot of people hate, such as the spraying, you know, urinating, getting into things, the tomcat howling. If we just remove those cats, somebody, you know, a few blocks down the road that there's cats that aren't under this program, they're going to keep having litters. And because there's now this space at, you know, John Smith's farm or his house, those cats are just going to migrate right back down there and he's going to continue to have this problem. And there, there's no upside to removing the cats because every year you're going to continue to have that problem.
I guess my question is what do you do with the cats if nobody wants them back?
There's plenty of people out there with farms, there's other organizations that deal with TNR specifically that would be able to.
So, you have a place for them other than putting them back in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other comments you'd like to make?
No, I just want to thank council for the opportunity. My thoughts on our animal laws ever since I got here a little over a year ago is that some of our laws are just very antiquated and they could use some modernization. There's a lot of counties in Maryland and, you know, on the state level, all across the country, there's different counties and municipalities that have been enacting a lot of these laws as a way to kind of find that balance because you have to walk that fine line of taking care of the animals but not infringing on the animal owner's rights because animals are considered property. So, you have to walk that fine line on making sure that you're finding that balance and that's what we're trying to do.
Something to do, without a doubt, that's the hardest part of it. But we appreciate you taking the initiative, Mr. Bradley, we appreciate you being on the committee. Mrs. Wallace, thank you for your participation. I know you were on the first committee.
I was.
That met years ago.
Yeah.
And that was, that was a task back then as well.
It was.
I appreciate the hard work that you, that you did back then as well. So, we'll review it, we'll also give it to legal counsel so that they can review it.
Okay.
And then we'll most undoubtedly, we'll meet again and try to finalize it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Great. All right, thank you all for being here today.
Thanks a lot for helping out too.
Good work, guys.
Thanks, Shaun.
Next item on the agenda, we have the Councilmatic District map software demonstration. I know Mr. Frank McKenzie is here. Frank, how are you?
Good morning, everyone. Two seconds to.
You have a big screen for us today?
It's always good when it fires up and shoots too much air, I'm kidding. Before I get started too far, I'm sure the council is aware that, you know, over the years, we've prepared Councilmatic maps that shows all the districts of county. And it was a PDF map. And I can show you how the public access is that.
Frank, if you could speak into the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me?
One of the first things I'm going to do is go back to the county basic website and go to the planning office. Where departments. It wants to jump. Come on. We put a link on the planning and zoning website to a room we call the map room, GIS map room. And basically, it is a series of maps that the office has been maintaining over the years. And when you go to the site, this is like a disclaimer telling you we've done our best to make this as accurate as possible. Things change, especially with ownership. So, on, on this page, there's a link to a whole series of maps, both city and county. It's some base maps, city of Salisbury maps, some environmental maps. Each one of these is a PDF, so you can click on this and you can view the map on your computer or you can download it to your, to your hard drive. There's also Councilmatic maps. So, let me see here. Blackwood County election districts there. It appears we've lost our Councilmatic map. That site map is available through the county council site. But there are a series of election district maps that are available through our existing site. But these are, you know, PDF static maps. And we've been in the process of updating our software to allow the public to get access to our GIS and to our data and to the maps we've been generating. And we recently have been working on an upgrade to our software, to a new product called GeoCortex. And I'm just now starting to roll this out and build these applications. This happened about the same time, I got an email from Laura saying that the council was considering having some type of searchable map or searchable database the public could go to and say, you know, where do I live? This is where I live, who's my council representative? So, with this, this map is a draft, I'm still working on trying to develop this. But this will, we'll set up a link on the county council page that will go to this map. And when you fire it up, you'll see, you know, the county map into the five districts. Now, on the left, we've got some instructions over here. So, first off, we want everybody to be, to be aware that, you know, there are at-large districts. And we want to be sure that everywhere you went, you knew that you were represented by the at-large council folks. So, right from the get-go, we talked about the county is served by seven council members, two at-large and one for each district. And then, you know, I started putting some information here. I've got Mr. Cannon, I've got information about being council president, your address, phone number, and a link to do an email. Same thing for Mr. Holloway. But now, if somebody wants to figure out, okay, whose district am I in? The easiest way to do it would be to search by your address. So, in here, to find your district representative, you click search address below. And as you fill out your address, you'll start to see options start to appear. So, I'll click on this. And a box will come up. And I'll type in. Once you start typing in, it starts to give you options of all the available addresses in the county. So, here I've typed in 414 and here's an option of 414 Forest Lane, for instance. So, I can click on that and hit search. And it's going to find this property and it's going to go right to it and tell you.
Nice job, Frank.
That's District Four and Representative John Hall.
Isn't that his address?
It just happens to be.
He's at home.
My question, if you'll scroll back left to the top, why is it just listed to at-large candidates or council people? I mean, shouldn't all seven council people be listed on it?
What I was trying to represent is that the at-large are representative of the entire county. And then if you want to know your specific district, then you could search further. Now, there are, there is a list at the council website that shows all the different council folks. If you wish me to figure out a way to put all seven over here.
I think if you just listed the, the members in those districts after you have the search in it, just so that you could see the names.
I can certainly try to work out something that'll fit in there and we'll try to figure out a way to display that.
On that first map, Frank, what Joe's talking about, I think it would be good on those maps where you have the different colors to put like District 1.
Put a 1, 2 and 3.
Yeah, and then what Joe's suggesting.
You could put the names in those areas. John Hall's name's like a fan there too.
Put my address.
He has a short name.
If anything, put District 1, 2, 3 and 4 and then next to the names of the individuals, they could have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Well, see, as you zoom in here, they start to show up like that.
Oh, they are there.
So, as you zoom in, but the initial display does not have that.
Did you do it on the initial?
Yes, I can, so. And the whole point of today is to say, okay, it's feedback and what you guys want to see when we fire this up.
Looks good.
Yeah. I'm still working on the look and feel, the same in the colors.
Sure.
That kind of thing, but.
If you keep zooming right here, does it go down the street view, I mean, or down to?
As a matter of fact, we can go, you see the property lines? We can also show the air photography. See if I can get that to come up here. Well, it's not showing that, so I'll have to tweak that. But we'll set it up. The goal is to keep this as simple as possible. We can make this very complicated and they can do zoning analysis and all that. Basically, this is just, you know, who's my council representative. There you can see the photograph.
Do you have maps also for delegate districts and senate districts?
I have the data, now I have not regularly.
Well, you have, you have a Maryland's lower east shore legislative districts. You have a legislative district.
I've done that map and that's a PDF, that's not searchable. Because I don't know what's going on in Somerset.
And you have Compaq County election districts. But those aren't county election districts.
Those are not the Councilmatic districts.
Right.
So.
Are they old districts like Parsons District?
And some, like surveyors use that because they have to populate information when they do apply it. That information's still tracked. But this came really opportune, opportune time when Laura contacted me because right now we're just building these, this product. And this would be a good opportunity to test it out.
Yeah, that's really nice.
I'm okay with the names changing, the district traveled and on the side, everybody okay with that?
Well, I'll, I'll figure it out, so when you.
I think you can put it on the side and it's, it's not going to take, it's not going to have to be linked or anything. You're just, they're there and people can recognize.
That's what I was suggesting, like down below, just have District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, just have the names. It doesn't have to be a click on link.
Okay.
Because you've got your at-large, you've got your searchable box.
It's good though.
Okay, well, just.
I think it's great.
I'll give you guys an update, show what the possibilities are.
And they're accurate?
Yes, sir.
That's what I want to hear.
It's really, it's really informative because a lot of times it's, it is very confusing. I think when you get into like the Delmar area, when you get into like the Sharp Town and Mordella area, trying to distinguish exactly where the borderline stops and starts. This is very helpful.
Yeah, I've had people say they voted for me and live over Mordella, but that's not my district.
Oh, you're going to talk to Mark Kilmer about that.
But I do say, Mark, because you're a rep, he's a good rep.
We'll have to work on the.
The speed is.
The speed of the.
It's slower in this, I think this room is slower.
Exactly.
I think the reception in here is a little slower.
Yeah, because it's stuck right there.
Yeah. That's because everybody in Salisbury is using it.
The fact that it's responsive, but just not displaying the data or something.
Yeah.
But that's really all I have, just to give you an update and show you.
That's all we have.
Good start, Frank.
I think it looks good.
What's your timeline for?
Excuse me? Go to the planning and zoning. And there's a GIS.
You can actually, you can actually Google Compaq County map room and it'll give you the link.
It'll give you that.
Right to it.
We can probably have that link connected to the county council's web, webpage as well.
Yes, yeah, on this map, there is, let's go back to the homepage. At the very bottom, to go to the county council website, click here. I'll see if it, that's working. We work downstairs. Let me reload this page here.
There are maps of the PDAs on here because I'm, I'm going to be messing with it.
Yeah, we got that, they're not on there yet though. You reload this site. You reload this site. Well, I broke it evidently. So I'll have to take it back and continue tweaking this thing. But you can see what, hopefully, it'll be smooth.
What's your timeframe as far as?
I'm still learning how to look at some of this. I've got to work with IT. So it could be four, six weeks.
That's good.
Now it's restarted again.
We'll get you back when you have the finished product.
For a time.
Okay, so what you're envisioning is over here, there's a list of all seven numbers on the left-hand panel.
Well, you already said district representative, maybe down to that area. Or below the search address.
So any ideas you have, you can contact Laura. What we can do is, as I get far along in this, I can send you kind of drafts of this map.
Okay.
You guys take a look at it.
Did you say you could or could not put the district names on?
I can do that. I'm just trying to keep.
This main map right there?
They're on there.
No, but you can't see them right now.
So what I can do, like for this, if you put the names on there, like John Hall's district's so small.
Yeah.
As you zoom in, it starts to appear. But one thing we can do is like at the initial, I'm saying, is just to have numbers up there, 1, 2, 1, 2, 5. And then, as you zoom closer, more data starts to reveal itself.
Okay.
So we can try a couple of different things.
Yeah, it looks good.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Yeah, if you have the updates, you want to send them and send the link to us, and that'd be a good thing for us to periodically review.
Okay, that's it.
Any other questions? Frank, thank you very much.
The person that's laughing, Derek.
Good morning, Frank.
There's two applicants. One is real serious GIS. The other one has some GIS. So. The topic came to me about it. We need to get that going. Let's start.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Personnel Manual Review. I know that we have Mr. Ed Baker and Ms. Susan Morris here. Sharon Morris here.
Good morning.
Where's Matt?
Listen in action. Sharon probably knows where he is.
So we, last time we left off was Chapter 9, correct?
I have a question. If, I know our process is to go through this. And then, we give it to the executive. The executive goes through it again, and then gives it back to us. So we have the changes that we make while we're going through this. Then the executive has the changes. He goes through them. He goes back and we look at the executive's changes. We're finished, hopefully. Correct?
Well, we've asked the executive to give us his opinion at any point in time.
Okay.
Any point in time, he can present us with any changes that he'd like to see made so that we can discuss that in the work sessions while we're going through the process as well.
Would it be easier to invite him to this work session and get his input as we go along?
Well, we've, we have told him that if he has any comments that he'd like to make, he can, he can present them to us.
I understand.
Simply enough. So as if he says, well, you know, section, you know, 0902-4 should be, you know, alcohol-free instead of alcohol, whatever. And those, those recommendations certainly can come to the table.
Okay. I'm just trying to expedite the process. And I think if we have the executive in the room, then we have an opportunity to either expedite the process or slow it down to a dead stop, one or the other. But I think it would probably be in the best interest to expedite the process. We've been a long time on this. You know, it's, since we've reviewed it this time, it's been over a year, I think, since the last time we looked at it. And any way we can move this on has to be beneficial to the employees. Just, just a suggestion.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Okay.
I missed the first part of that suggestion.
I suggest we have the executive in the room.
He was asking about the executive's input as opposed to during the process instead of afterward. And I informed John that we have asked the executive to feel free to make any recommendations he'd like to at any point in time so that we can include it in the work session. So it's all, it is all part of the same process. And by the time it gets done here and goes to him, it should be pretty much, you know, I would say, the same product. Or product could be.
Yeah, we would also. But, and my contention, Joe, is if we have him in the room, then it goes, after we're done, it goes to him. And then, he could redo it and come back to us. Whereas if he was in the room, we could resolve whatever issues were at the same time.
I guess he's able to be early.
He could. I don't know. Well, now we get back to whether I was invited or whether I was not invited. You know about that, right?
I'm thinking it would drag it out too long.
Bobby?
I'm thinking it would drag it out too long.
Are you? You think it would make the process longer?
Well, what about someone from Human Resources? Would they experience in this? Would that be our line to have somebody?
Well, they're going to, they're going to be reviewing it. I think initially, it started with the executive in Human Resources. And there was a lot of pushback from the, from the employees, if you remember that. And that's, that is the reason for the delays, John. So now, we have it, we've brought it back. You know, Matt and Ed and Sharon have taken this on to, to try to tweak it as what was recommended by the original commission or committee. So we're using that approach. We're also requesting input from all the employees. So we have, you know, their say in this matter. And in the same sense, we're also asking for the input from the executive. And by the time we're done, there's going to be a process where the council gives it to the executive. He sends it back. That's just how the process works.
Just something to try to expedite.
I appreciate it.
So we're on Chapter 9?
Chapter 9.
So we had any input from employees or from county executives on anything we discussed so far?
Do you knowledge?
We have not had any comments submitted from employees. The county executive made a couple of comments on Monday, I believe, yesterday.
Is it possible to let the employees know that we're currently working on it as a reminder?
They know that.
Well, they knew that in the beginning. And that's when we got a lot of emails. But now, it's like, when it's stagnant from them.
It is strange. We got so many emails the first time, and we've got zero this time.
I think, I think they have, honestly, I can't speak for the employees. But I think they have a lot of confidence in how the process is working. And I think that may be, that may be what we're looking at. Anyway, we do have open work sessions to the public. And they'll know even from today, Larry, that we are working on it. We could certainly make a request to the executive to reinform the employees that we're in the process and to ask them one more time for their input. Laura, if you want to approach that with them and see if they would send another note out, however they're sending that information.
And if they don't respond, then we're confident.
Okay. That's a good point. Good morning.
Good morning.
Now that you're here.
Now that I'm here. And John, I will expedite this unless you have questions.
We just de-expedited it by 10 minutes.
Chapter 9. I am neither a medical person or a toxicologist. So I'm just going to give you what's before me for the substance abuse and drug testing. I would say that this chapter, and we'll see it later on, is to actually help employees as well as to help identify those problems that we can't resolve. The county has an EPA program for assistance for drug and alcohol abuse. Chapter 9, starting at 901, just explains the policy that there is a drug and alcohol policy in the workplace and the seriousness of that. The definition section for abuse, alcohol, conviction, drug testing, and the employee are all spelled out. And if you have any questions, we can review that. Reasonable suspicion is that quantity of proof or evidence that is more than a hunch, less than a probable cause, probable cause, again, as defined by somebody who has more experience in that. But sometimes, we know what it looks like. And that would be considered suspicion or reasonable cause. Safety sensitive positions means that those classifications of jobs determine to be safety sensitive in accordance with this section. Substance means alcohol or drugs. And the supervisor, of course, would be the person with the day-to-day operation and responsibility over those individuals. Questions?
Any questions? You're doing really, really well.
Okay. The application section is the illegal activity from an employee. They are not allowed to possess, use, manufacture, purchase, sell, transfer, distribute, or dispense any controlled substance or possess, use, or manufacture, purchase, sell, transfer, distribute. You can see we tried to cover all of it in the workplace. Employees must report to work in a fit condition.
Could I interrupt for a sec?
Yes.
For A, you know, now that we have alcohol sales at the civic center, you know, it says may not sell, distribute, dispense alcohol in the workplace.
Illegally.
So, well, illegally possessed means under controlled substances. And then, you know, I mean, it's not illegal to possess alcohol. But, you know, what you're saying is you can't possess alcohol on the job. And I understand, you don't, you know, people can't have a beer riding around and they're working on parks or whatever. But, I mean, there probably needs to be an exception for the alcohol, you know, except, you know, I mean, there aren't county employees that dispense and sell alcohol at the civic center as part of their jobs now. So maybe that needs, I mean, I understand the intention is obviously.
Sure. And that this was written.
Prior.
Prior to that.
Yeah. So I mean, there probably needs to be something in there that, you know, except as otherwise, you know, allowed to enter the job, you know.
That's true. That's a good point. And again, it was, it was written before that happened. And you'll find that throughout this document, that there were instances of things that have changed policy. I don't know what you may be doing with that now.
A lot of things change when we change a policy. And you find that in a lot of things.
Absolutely. And you will continue to, to find that. And I won't try to define policies that are existent now that were not in existence prior to 2016. Again, all employees must report to work in fit conditions. Employees that are undergoing prescribed medical treatment with any drug that may alter their behavior or physical or mental condition should report such. The employee, if there is a reason why they cannot perform and must use a prescribed treatment, the employee may be temporarily reassigned.
And that is within the employee's rights? You know, how somebody, sometimes they'll say, well, you know, if he's on medication, that's a medical issue. And are they obligated to divulge that? They may not want to say, hey, I'm on a particular medication. So is there, are there any boundaries that we're overstepping when we?
That would be for HIPAA or something.
Right. I just want to make sure they're not in violation of any of those.
But if they have to take a drug test, and oxycodone, oxycotin shows up, and they didn't disclose it.
Then you have a problem.
That would be a problem. Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Non-safety sensitive employees or safety sensitive employees must all report any charge, arrest, or conviction relating to drug and alcohol possession. In both cases, they must report it in three days for non-safety employees and at the beginning of their next scheduled workday for safety sensitive employees.
Is there a definition for safety sensitive employees?
I'll let Ed define it.
It's a couple of sections.
I don't remember seeing it. That's why I'm asking.
It's actually in the definition section.
It would be in there. You don't have to find it. If we're going to get to it, then.
It's on page 51.
Page 51.
904G.
So are we going back on?
No, it's a couple pages.
I'm looking at 57 on mine. So, okay, I'll sit down at the bottom. 51, you said?
A classification of job is determined to be safety sensitive when in reasonable judgment it meets the following criteria. The classification of job contains a significant degree of responsibility for safety for others. The job contains the potential that impaired performance of the employee could result in the death or injury to the employee or others. And the lack of close monitoring of the employee's behavior reduces the possibility of intervention or assistance by another when necessary.
But it doesn't specifically say job titles?
No.
No.
I was just wondering if that was big or not. I guess there's a system.
You can.
It's kind of a federal law that determines when it's safety sensitive.
But you know what positions are in the county if you wanted to add, you know, those positions specific.
Well, we already know police officers is one.
But anybody who would handle or will operate equipment, machinery.
Machinery.
As suggestions. But you could certainly do that. I think we're on 49.
Thank you.
Sure. All drug and alcohol testing will be performed in conformance with applicable law. There is a certification for laboratory use for testing. And also, the State of Maryland Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration for specimen testing.
A laboratory.
How often do we do random drug tests?
I don't know what you do.
Because I'm asking, because that, it's expensive to do a drug test.
I don't know what you do now. But I would, but prior to that.
I didn't know it was in the handbook.
Again, by reasonable suspicion, or if there was, if administration or HR feels that there's a conversation that's been held with a supervisor or somebody who suggests that, the supervisor would possibly know that it was going to happen.
That's fine. It's just a big issue in here. I know it's expensive.
Yeah.
Okay. So I know it's in here. It's on page 51. Section F deals with the types of testing programs we have. Application for employment, transfer to a safety sensitive position. Reasonable suspicion, random, is four times per fiscal year.
There we go.
For the safety sensitive employees?
No, it's, I believe that's for.
Safety sensitive positions are subject to random testing.
I believe that's all.
A minimum of four times a year.
That's a lot.
And then they do post into the testing.
Okay. Yeah, I see that.
But again, the document recommends.
Okay. Any questions, Marlon?
To continue that, we've kind of jumped through it. And I think we've covered most of it. If you have any questions.
Any questions on Chapter 9 here?
Is it a state mandate that we have rehabilitation programs available?
I don't know if it is or not.
I can look into that.
One question on 905, all the way at the bottom, where it says Office of the Sheriff under C. It's just above 906 in discipline. It says Office of the Sheriff. The Office of the Sheriff may have their own standalone substance upon review and approved by the Director of Administration. Brings up a point as to where we define everyone's role. Should the executive be part of this decision as opposed to just the Director of Administration? And that is something that I think that, you know, reference to what John had discussed earlier, where is it that we put the Director of Administration in a role of responsibility as opposed to? as opposed to the executive, or whether it should be both?
It's really a policy decision that the council can make. I think historically, it's been done by the Director of Administration because he's responsible to the executive, and he's in charge of all the employees below, so. That's normally why we would have that there. But if the council desires it, we could also put the executive in as well. Excuse me.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying. I mean, the Director of Administration works directly under the supervision of the executive, so it, it probably goes without saying that this would suffice, but I just wanted to bring that to attention.
Sure.
Throughout the whole document, I guess. Okay. Chapter ten.
Chapter ten, for performance evaluations, the purpose of which is to provide supervisors a tool for evaluating their employee's performance from probationary periods forward.
I would just note on that one, that one, that ten oh one was kind of indicative of what we did when we were going through it. We went through all the employee comments, and one of the comments by an employee, I don't know who it was, basically said that we went to a great deal of effort to explain the use of performance evaluations for the executive or the management side, what benefit did it have to the employees? And that's why this was put in here, because the whole performance evaluation process allows the employee to gauge where he is in process of complying with all the job requirements and job standards.
Okay.
And that was specifically put in to address that employee.
Good.
Comment.
Evaluation techniques, the employee's performance should be done in as an objective manner as possible against goals and standards that have been established. The employee should be aware of what their responsibilities are, how they achieve the goal. If they're not, they have a process that happens that, at any time, that they can go to the employer for correction, better understanding, so that when they get to the end of the year and they're rated and reviewed, the employee understands what's happened throughout the year with their work performance. All regular full-time and regular part-time employees with the expectation of appointed, at the exception of appointed positions, must receive an evaluation of work performance at the following periods. That's not to say that somebody who is an appointed person could not be evaluated by the Director of Administration or executive, if he chooses to do so. The first performance evaluation form shall be completed two weeks prior to the end of the probationary period. If the evaluation is going to be unsatisfactory, the supervisor must contact and consult the Department of Human Resources prior to the evaluation completion. And then the annual review, a performance evaluation shall be completed whenever there are significant changes in the employee's performance, changes of supervisors, their extension of an evaluation period can be allowed, but the director, the department head must inform the Director of Human Resources and the reason for the delay. Where improvements are needed or unsatisfactory performance, a second evaluation by the department is conducted, the department should again contact the Department of Human Resources. Performance rating appeals if the employee is not satisfied with their evaluation. The performance evaluation shall not be subject to the standard grievance procedure, except in the case of an overall rating of less than satisfactory, and the grievance process is going to be discussed later. If after a review of their performance evaluation with a rate, or the employee believes that the performance evaluation is inaccurate, they can provide comment on the evaluation form or attach a written reason for their non-concurrents with the evaluation. If attached, written reasons for non-concurrents will become part of the official evaluation and be used by the reviewer to finalize the evaluation and/or request a meeting with the reviewer. Appointed employees will be evaluated annually on a form approved by the Director of Administration.
Question, if, if a department head or someone who is derelict in performing the evaluations, is there a penalty?
Not that explained in this document.
No.
But again, that would be up to the Director of Administration, who oversees all county department heads, and who would expect them to adhere to county policy.
And it should reflect badly in their evaluation that this paragraph just mentioned.
Okay, thank you. I would only say that under, I know that near the bottom, you talked about how they can make changes to the form or make comments on the form, but I think maybe in the purpose that somewhere, evaluation techniques or something, I, I, one sentence that says that the employee will receive a copy of the evaluation form. It, it sort of goes without saying, because you mentioned later on that they can make changes to the form, but I just think, as a tighter document, it'd be good to put on here somewhere, maybe under evaluating techniques, that a, a copy of the form will be supplied to the employee, given to the employee.
Employees should be notified when they, I'm sorry, an employee who voluntarily resigns from the county is expected to give at least two weeks' written notice to their immediate supervisor. The department head shall immediately forward the employee's resignation to HR on a personnel action notification.
I was reading this. Is there an opportunity, and they could opt out of this, if they wanted to, to express why they're leaving?
Yes, there is an opportunity. Or, or there was.
Is it defined in here? It's not defined in here, I don't, I didn't see it defined in here anywhere.
Usually, you know, in the exit interview.
They have an exit interview.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm looking for the provisional exit interview.
They do have an exit interview.
But that's an interview, that's not a written resignation.
No, but if, if an employee chooses to do that, I think that, that might be helpful going forward, if there was a reason that needed to explain departmental-wise why they were leaving. Most of the time, an employee will give you a two-liner when they resign.
That's fine. That's what I'm saying.
That's why you provide the exit interview, because hopefully, they're comfortable enough to have that conversation.
Well, conversation's fine, but, you know, later down the road, five years or ten years, if somebody comes back and says, you know, say they reapply for their job, or, you know, somebody calls, well, why did they leave? You know, the person that, you know, talked to them may not be around. So, I was wondering if it should be put in here that there is an opportunity at this time to.
And I don't know what the general practice is, but my exit interview was checklist, was a place for comments, so.
So, it is documented?
There rightfully, there'd be a written document of the interview, yeah.
Okay, instead of just a, just a verbal interview.
That's a great idea, whatever is not in place, because like you said, if somebody comes back or somebody calls for a reference, then you have something that you can refer to that's in writing.
I think the exit interview is also to improve on us as an employer.
Yes.
Part of the exit interview, and I think you alluded to it, Ed, isn't, isn't there a statement we would rehire or not recommended for rehire in the exit interview?
That's basically what's said, if somebody calls and.
Exactly.
That's basically all you can say, isn't it? When somebody calls for a reference, I mean, isn't that?
No, I think he's talking about whether or not the county has marked them as not eligible for rehire. I can't remember if that's anything like that. I don't think there was anything advised.
I think if you think about the average temperament of an employee, most often, they choose not to put it in writing, especially if they are leaving under terms that they don't feel are ones they want to return to. Non-disciplinary dismissal is the voluntary separation of an employee for such reasons as disability, expiration of a seasonal variable employment, cancellation of a contract, completion of project, reduction in force, or other forms of separation. The reason for terminating an employee should be entered on the personnel action notification. The personnel action notification is a, a tremendous document and part of the HR module that was, that was purchased through Munis. It has the life history of an employee now employed going forward. It documents everything that happens to an employee. So, it's, it's a great tool, and, and it was a good investment. Reduction in force, the policy, a lack of work, a lack of funds, reorganization, policy change, or change in technology, or some or other similar circumstances may result in a need for the county council to abolish or defund positions within the following groups upon recommendation of the county executive.
I could, to point out, insurance permission, this, there's a number of technical issues that we've corrected as we went through there. This originally read need for the county to abolish or defund positions, and we just clarified that it has to be on the recommendation of the county executive, and it's the county council who defunds. The places where it did not address the bifurcation of the government into legislative and executive have been clarified throughout here, and that was one of them.
Employees selected or given thirty days' calendar notice of their proposed employment status change or dismissal. In cases of mass reduction, where there are fifty employees or more, sixty calendar days advanced, written notice will be provided. Less than fifty employees require thirty-day notice. Beginning any reduction in force, alternative personnel measures might be reduced, might reduce the impact of reduction in force, partial or total hiring freezes the county experienced, dismissal of all employees that are not regular, part-time, and then it gives you a variable list of choices that you can use in lieu of mass reduction, and the selection of positions. Once the positions to be changed, defunded, or abolished within the appropriate groups have been identified, selection of employees from the affected group shall be made by the county executive based upon the following factors, and it lists them according to groups. The Department of Human Resources will determine the race, gender, and age distribution of county employees to be determined if a protected employee group will be disproportionately affected by the reduction in force. The statistics shall be made available to or used by the actual decision-makers in the selection of employees to be terminated, but shall be reviewed by the Director of Human Resources. Employees' appeal rights, employees who believe that the job-related action has been, has not been consistent with the county's reduction in force procedures shall have an opportunity for an administrative hearing. County provides the following services offered by the Department of Human Resources to pro, to provide both logistical and counseling support to affected employees. Employees who have been subject to a reduction in force shall be eligible for recall upon the availability of a position for which they are qualified within one year of reduction based upon their previous employment history record with the county. And then the process to do so is.
And section eleven oh four is another example of comment I just made previously, dealing with furloughs, it's involuntary separation of employee for a period of time. Director of Administration deals with the executive branch, and we added that the county council, at its sole discretion, shall approve positions and employees to be furloughed within the legislative branch, both because of the bifurcation of the two branches of government, and because of the fact that you only have one or two employees, so they won't both furlough.
Section eleven oh five, disability, the county reserves the right for the health, safety, productivity, and security of persons, property, and facilities at its discretion to the extent permitted by applicable law to require applicants for employment and employees to consent in writing and submit to medical or physical examination by a physician designated by or approved by the county at the county's expense for the following: temporary, disability, and long term. Eleven oh six is retirement. Employees planning to retire must contact the Department of Human Resources at least sixty days in advance of the planned retirement date. Separation, retirement, pay, the employee is, will receive the salary, all salary earned up to the effective date of separation or retirement, including salary withheld at higher. They will receive for the number of hours of unused accrued annual leave up to the maximum allowed, holidays not taken, for the time, for the number of hours or unused accrued compensatory leave, and one quarter of the unused accrued sick leave, up to the maximum. Now, that's change.
Yeah, that's, that's a major change, that when you get to, I can't remember which chapter it is, other benefits, when they talk about sick leave, sick leave was entitled to a number of benefits. This one, we've changed to one quarter of the unused sick leave for employees hired prior to the adoption of this manual. Once this manual is adopted, assuming that they have ten years of continuous service, employees who are hired after you adopt this manual would be ineligible for the payout, one quarter payout of sick leave. Just want to keep that in mind when you find out what sick leave is addressed later, and combine it all together for the benefits.
Again, the exit interview, the process of separation from employment. The employee check out their final pay. A letter of reference to whom it may concern will not be provided to the employee, as these letters can be easily misused. Requests for letters to specific companies giving information on terminated employees should be handled by the Department of Human Resources upon receipt of a written request from the employee. Be good? Okay. Chapter twelve, disciplinary and corrective actions, again, the goal here is to retain the employees, discipline where necessary, so that when corrective action is taken, the employee is a better employee.
Sure. We'll be, we'll be reviewing chapters, what do you recommend, twelve through, what, fourteen next time? Fourteen looks like it might be lengthy. We'll take your recommendation as far as how long you think, you know, is long enough to review it one, one minute at a time?
Twelve through fourteen is.
Twelve, twelve and thirteen look like they should be rather quick. Fourteen, I think, is going to be.
Fourteen is going to be a major one.
Do you want to do it separately, or do you want to do it with twelve and thirteen?
Let's do twelve and thirteen.
Just twelve and thirteen, or you can do fourteen?
Do fourteen.
Okay, we'll have twelve and thirteen on the agenda. Thank you very much for your time.
Sure.
Yes. Any questions at all in reference to what we've reviewed? Okay.
Congratulations on your appointment of dawn.
Oh, very nice, huh? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sharon.
You're welcome.
This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn as the Wycomick County Council may convene as the Urban Services Commission. Second, who is in favor?
I oppose.
Council has now convened as the Urban Services Commission. The first item on the agenda is burnt branch subdivision, street lighting. Mr. Baker, good, good, uh, good afternoon, good morning still, yes, great, great, yeah. Great, yeah. You know, looking at this, I thought this was something really, really familiar to some, having been...
It has. It's been before here before as the first step to say, okay, yeah, the commission is willing to entertain basically a lighting district for this community. Once we get the go-ahead from the commission, then the next step is we coordinate with the local electric provider, in this case, it's Chop Tank Electric, to get a cost estimate for how much it's gonna run for, for streetlights in this community.
And who collects that? Does Chop Tank collect that?
Yeah, I believe it's billed directly to the, to the individuals.
On their monthly bill?
Yeah, exactly. And then, from there, we'll, we get your blessings and move forward, we'll have a public hearing, a meeting with, with the community to let them know how much it's gonna be, make sure there's still support for it.
Okay.
If they're still on board, then we move forward with establishing it. What we have right here, in front of you, is the breakdown from Chop Tank Electric. Roughly, it's gonna cost the entire community $253.90 a month. There are 54 lots, which comes to a cost of $4.70 per house. So, there were 40 lot owners out of 54 signed the petition. So, if you guys are okay with us moving forward, we will have the, the public hearing. It's my understanding that the commission is usually present at the hearing, or representatives from them. We're looking for locations to have the meeting. I understand that we need to have it at a location kind of closer to the, to the community. One suggestion was actually over there to Salvation Army over at Billie Jean Jackson Park, which I hadn't thought of before.
I actually spoke to them, and they said as long as we give them two weeks' notice, we can have the community meeting right there in their cafeteria.
I know the last time we met as an urban service, we met at the church.
That was the New Dimensions Church. And I've also reached out to them as well.
That's either closer, like, it's closer, but I think so. They always get to it.
Well, however you want to arrange it, and I guess we have to coordinate the council's schedule.
So, the public notice has to be advertised three times for three consecutive weeks. So, the earliest we can have it would be the week of August the 14th, but that is the week of May 12th. So, ideally, Monday or Tuesday of that week, if you guys are available.
Thank you.
Otherwise, we can have it the week of August the 22nd.
Might as well get the calendars out now. All right?
Do you want to look at the, I guess, the last week of August?
I'm gone pretty much most of August, so, don't...
So, you're open most of August?
No, I'm gone most of August.
You what?
I'm gone most of August.
Oh, you are?
But you don't necessarily need me for the public hearing, so...
Why don't we send out a...
A doodle poll?
A doodle poll?
Sure.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
And if you want to go in the first, first week of September, I don't think that's a problem for, for the neighbor, for the neighborhood. Do you think?
This is actually gonna require two public hearings, just so you know. This is the first of the two. The first one is to go over the preliminary study and the estimated cost, and then the second one is to go over the completed engineering and feasibility study.
Are you saying a public hearing with the council on location, with the Urban Services Commission?
The Urban Services Commission.
On location?
Yes.
Well, let's go ahead and get a poll out for council, for commission members in September. Let's see if we can wrap it up in September.
And you want to wrap it up in September, or have the first meeting in September?
Have both, and see if we can have them both in September.
Okay.
I don't know what your time for it is.
That's gonna be close, because the second one also requires the advertising of three, three times.
All right, let's put one in the last week of August, and then the next one in September.
Okay.
I'm sorry, this is the, I'm coming in this a little bit halfway through. Wasn't the first meeting with that resolution, was that not the, the meeting for...
No, that wasn't, yeah, that wasn't a, that was just a meeting with the Urban Service Commission to initiate, to start the initial process, but that was not the public hearing.
All right, 'cause the engineering study from Chop Tank is included in the pack, which is where we got the cost from.
Is that the preliminary study, or is that a complete study?
As far, I'm, I guess I would have to see the difference between a complete and a preliminary.
Okay.
So, all right, we'll find out.
You learn things.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Does Chop Tank need to be at the public hearing?
They usually come, because they'll tell you right where the polls are, and the people that...
So, we'll do the two polls for the two separate dates?
Yes.
Good, good. And, and of course, you, I'm assuming you would include Dallas in this as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And whoever else may be, Weston, I'm not sure, what, what representatives from the administration are necessary?
Normally, Public Works handles this, so I'm, I've never attended one myself, Weston. I don't know if you've ever attended one of the meetings?
I attended Kirkwood.
The Kirkwood one? Okay.
Yeah, and we've had legal there before. I'm not quite so sure of what the necessity is, or how important that is, but I'll leave that up to you.
Okay.
Good, huh? Very good? Okay.
All right.
That was easy, huh?
Okay. Thank you very much, Dallas.
Thank you, Dallas.
Entertaining a motion to adjourn the open session so that we can go into a closed work session as the Urban Services Commission...
So moved.
So moved.
Which, of course, would be followed by a closed work session with the Wycom County Council. Second, we have, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Means adjourned as we go into closed session. I don't know if we have all the individual party...